Welcome to the East Greenbush Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 4th. Board members present this evening, everyone here except for Ms. Steinbeck and Ms. Kermersky, I expect to be here momentarily. With that, please rise and join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. The history of our country, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the Lord's name.
It's always wonderful to get to our elementary schools or other buildings when we travel around this time of year and other times of year to see some of the parents and kids and the things that are going on during the school year, and we're really excited to hear from our, our staff and our principal and our students and of course, our parents if they want to do that. So I will first go to our agenda item for student council, Emma and Ron, are you here?
Yes.
How you doing? Good to see you. Ready for break?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. The multicultural fair happened tonight at Columbia from five to seven, and student council ran a booth for Turkey to raise money to help those impacted by the earthquakes.
And our meeting is very short tonight, and lastly, we have that we are starting the fundraiser for our end of the year field trip, the Six Flags, so be on the lookout for that. That's all we have.
Six Flags.
New England.
New England.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Have a great break, right? Now, we have pleasure of introducing our elementary, Belltop Elementary School Principal, Mr. Marty Mahar. Take it away, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Biel. On behalf of the Belltop community, I welcome the Board of Education, Mr. Simons, Mr. Stiles, Ms. Cannon, and Mrs. Wager this evening as we host the Board of Education meeting. The restoration of a full-time library program here at Belltop this year has been beneficial to the entire school. Tonight, we will highlight a few of those, namely, that the full-time program has provided students and teachers with increased access to books and other resources. We were able to add new programs, and there has been an increase in teacher collaboration for a variety of student projects. Before this year, Belltop had a part-time librarian through a Questar contract. The librarian was a Belltop three days a week, and then at Questar School. This schedule required that the library was closed two days a week, limiting student access. But this year, Belltop was brought into alignment with the other elementary schools, and a full-time librarian was hired by East Greenbush. Now, the library is open five days a week. This access to the library has greatly improved engagement, student engagement with library resources. Let's take a look at our circulation statistics, so you can get a better picture of the benefit of a full-time program. With the part-time schedule, our average annual book circulation was nine thousand seven hundred and fifty books. That was for the full school year. This year, with the full-time schedule, the circulation so far as of April 3rd was twelve thousand four hundred and ten books, which means more students reading more books. Students now have access to go to the library any day of the week. They are no longer limited to only checking out books when they have library class. The experience much more closely mirrors the experience for upper grades, as well as college and adult library usage. Similarly, they have more access to a certified librarian, where they can engage in a reader advisory with the librarian and ask questions about their projects and interests. This has led to a more student-focused and supportive library program overall. Another benefit of the full-time program is the addition of new programs. One of these is an enrichment program we call Bookworms. And here to tell you about one of the Bookworms projects tonight are five second-grade students from Mrs. Panashi's class. They are Luke LeBlond, Lemon Lombardo, Elena Lyons, Tyler Menudo, and Willow Pipis, along with their library teacher, Mrs. Devine. All right, take it away.
Hello, Board of Education members. We are happy to be here tonight to talk about project we completed during our Bookworms group. Our Bookworms group meets every Wednesday for forty minutes with Mrs. Devine in the library. This fall, we researched Belltop's history. We started this project because Belltop received a historical plaque from the town of North Greenbush in honor of the school's eightieth anniversary. We used databases and original newspaper articles to learn more about our school. We also had a meeting with the town historian, Jim Greenfield. He helped us with our research and answered many of our questions.
Now, we would like to share some interesting facts about Belltop's history. In eighteen sixty-six, Belltop was originally built as a one-room building. It cost one thousand three hundred dollars to build the school. The name Belltop comes from the school bell that was purchased when the school was first built. It is still on site today. Also, we learned that the bell weighs two hundred seventy-six pounds, and it is now one hundred fifty-seven years old. When the school was built, Andrew Johnson was president, and the first memorial day was observed.
In nineteen forty, Belltop was moved to Reynolds Road and expanded to three rooms. It cost thirty-eight thousand dollars to build the new building. When we did our research, we wondered how much teachers were paid in nineteen forty. I guess one hundred sixty, the rest of our guesses ranged from two hundred twenty-five to eight hundred fifty a year. We learned that in nineteen forty, teachers made around one thousand four hundred a year, so we were all too low. In nineteen fifty-four, Belltop was expanded when the western wing was added. The nineteen fifty-four expansion cost a lot more than it did to build the school. It cost two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to expand the school. In that year, Dwight D. Eisenhower was the president. The first sub-four-minute mile was run by Roger Bannister, and the Detroit Red Wings defeated the Montreal Canadiens in the Stanley Cup.
In nineteen sixty-five, Belltop was expanded again when the eastern wing was added. We couldn't find the costs of that expanded. We did learn that there were four hundred students in the school in nineteen sixty-five. That is a hundred more students there than are here now. Also, we learned the history of the six paintings of imaginary animals that hang in our cafeteria. They were painted by Jacqueline Rogers, an artist from Cadence in nineteen eighty-one. We hope you enjoyed learning more about Belltop's history as much as we enjoyed researching it.
That was a great job, boys and girls. We still have another student agenda on, but Mrs. Devine has a few things to say.
All right, thank you, second graders. The other new program that we would like to highlight tonight is our Difference Makers Program. The Difference Makers Program is a library program for all fifth graders, where students read a book together, then develop a community service project inspired by the book. Along the way, students develop three broad social-emotional learning skills: skills for self, interpersonal skills, and skills for community members. All students in the fifth grade participate in Difference Makers. The students are divided into small groups that meet once a week for ten weeks. There are three rotations of classes throughout the year. Some of the projects students have worked on include creating the Owl's Nest, a free book station where students can take a book to keep, educating others on tolerance, Library Pals, where fifth graders read to first graders during their recess, educating others on pay inequity, and starting a recycling program at our school, and our Hartsford fundraiser. I'd like to call your attention to some of the learning that we've tracked for this project. When I first meet with the groups, they take an assessment to gauge their understanding of community service and civic engagement. And when I did that assessment, less than ten percent could define civic engagement in our first meeting. That increased to eighty-seven percent at the end of our sessions. And here are some examples of how they described civic engagement, engaging in helping your community, I think of people coming together and making a difference to impact something, and helping people, and being kind, so all, all really good ideas. Now, I am very pleased to introduce Quinn Riley, who is a fifth grader in our Language Concepts class, along with his teacher, Lauren Castellana, to talk about his Difference Makers project for Hartsford.
Please read the book, The Catman of Aleppo. The book was about the war in Syria and a man who saved cats and children who were orphaned during the war. We wanted to learn about local animals shelters after reading the book. Our teachers told us about Hartsford, a local animal shelter. We met with the owner on Google Meet and asked questions. Then we visited the shelter and learned about how they carry or abuse or homeless animals. After learning about Hartsford, we created a fundraiser to raise money for the animals. Our local school came together, and we raised five hundred thirty-eight dollars for Hartsford. We enjoyed working on this project. If you would like to know more, we can answer questions after the meeting.
Great job, Quinn. Thank you so much. Before I conclude this evening, I would like to thank the students and parents for coming tonight. Great job. Thank you. They did truly do a wonderful job. I also thank Mr. Simons and the Board of Ed for supporting our programs here at Belltop. The other day, I was reflecting back on a board meeting at the start of the school year, where the district librarians presented their five-year program review. And when they were finished, Mr. Dunn had requested to report back after one year of what Belltop achieved with the additional librarian time. Well, it hasn't been quite a full year, Mr. Dunn, but I hope this gives a good idea of what we've done so far, and I will gladly report out on all the remaining additional accomplishments this year. By the way, today is National School Librarians' Day. How ironic.
Good timing.
Thank you, Felice, for all of your hard work and amazing ideas. We are lucky to have you. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions?
I guess I gotta go first. Congratulations, kids, and thank you, staff, parents, everybody here tonight. This is just a great place to be. It's great to see the kids, and it's really good to see the hard work that you guys put into the programs that we create for you that are... I'm amazed, Marty, three quarters of the year, and you've far exceeded our expectations. And so that just means even greater things next year.
And you'll get your money's worth.
No, I know that. Thank you for your leadership. Belltop has a special place with me. My son is a Belltop graduate, and this is a great place, and we're looking forward to really working together, and this is a great, you've done a great job, so we thank you for our kids.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Anyone else, comments, questions?
I don't really have any questions, but just, all the kids did such a great job. It's so exciting to see how well-spoken you all were, and you were confident, and you're talking about all the things you're reading and learning. I learned new things about Belltop I never knew, and I never knew about that particular animal shelter, so great job.
Marty, can you have all the kids come up and just...
Sure thing.
Face the parents and...
Yeah, it'd be nice to get a great picture, too. All right, boys and girls, come on up.
Just the courage it takes to prepare, and thank you to the teachers and staff and the parents for allowing them to come and share them with us. Some of us have had kids out of the elementary schools for some time and to come back and, and bring those memories, come rushing back, so turn around that way. Say mom and dad. Thank you.
Wait for the audience. Get a picture.
Take some pictures with your... There you go. Stay up there, so mom and dad, parents can get some pictures. Nice job. Stay up there. Here we go, we got some more cameras coming out. Everybody all set, parents?
Good. Good.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, boys and girls. Michelle. Marty, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is the maple sugar or the maple syrup ready yet, or canned?
We finished, and we made four gallons of syrup.
Nice.
If you'd like some, I'll contact Melanie Light.
She's the keeper of the syrup. I know it's a lot of work, and it's one of the joys of this campus to be here at the school to have...
We're lucky to have the Learning Barn and all those activities. We truly are fortunate here, and they had a great time, and we had a lot of fun. Four gallons of syrup, that's a lot.
Four gallons, a lot, a lot of trees.
So in conclusion, I would, before I wrap up, I respectfully request a brief intermission, so everyone can enjoy some refreshments.
Refreshments, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
So we'll take about ten, fifteen minutes, and...
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Thanks, everyone. We'll be back in about ten minutes. Okay, well, now we'll move to item four, the minutes, per vogue draft minutes for March twenty-second. I was not present. Jennifer was not present, and moving right now to your mark. So the three of us will be abstaining. And are there any comments, revisions to the minutes of March twenty-second? See none, need a motion to approve the minutes. Michelle, I need a second. Joanne, all those in favor? Five, okay, that's a good quorum, all those abstaining. Jennifer, myself, and Mark, meeting minutes are approved. Now we'll go to our board forum. We'll start on my left with Cheryl. Anything? All right. Michelle. John, same. Mark.
I just want to say the Education Foundation had a really nice event this past weekend, so thanks to everyone that, you know, helped plan that, and congratulations to those who received recognition.
Kathleen. All right, so for me, just welcome everyone who's here. I know that we've got some topics on the agenda that some of our Belltop parents were very interested in. I've seen, received communications from folks, and there is a discussion item here. I see a lot of our transportation folks are here today. One thing I wanted to mention, too, in road transportation, there was some kind of social media posting about rumors about third-party contractors and stuff like that. So I don't know where that comes from, that kind of thing. We've always been huge supporters, there's no action going on with third-party contractors for our bus system. You know, we've had this for decades here, and, you know, we admire and thank our bus drivers for all they have done, like all those staff, through challenging times during COVID, and then coming out of COVID, all the things that they do to help our children get to, to school safely and to field trips and to sporting events. So I, I don't know where that kind of thing starts. It's, it's kind of disappointing to hear that, that was out there, so it's not true. So I want to make a public statement about that, okay? And I really want you to understand, as transportation staff, as a department, how much we value you and how important you are to this district, as community members, but also as staff. So with that, anyone else? Or go to public forum? All right. So we'll go to our public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operates the district other than management personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to such concerns during public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will consequently injure near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting. Should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this time? I know the parents are interested, so come on up. Hello.
Hello. Hello. My name is Stephanie Paris, and I'm a parent of two students at Belltop Elementary. Our family is very fortunate to be a part of the Belltop community. We have been pleased with the positive impact that attending this school has had on both our children in the last five years. There is a special atmosphere at Belltop, made possible by an amazing group of teachers and staff. I am often at the school volunteering in my children's classes, volunteering at school events, and for various Belltop fundraisers and projects. It is a privilege and an honor to be of service to this community. That said, I am concerned with the large projected class sizes for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and potentially beyond. As I am in the school regularly, I am often reminded of how full many of our classrooms are right now. Belltop parents share these concerns and have come together as a community to express them collectively. In an effort to make our voices as parents more impactful, we are respectfully submitting a petition in support of smaller class sizes at Belltop. I have provided that petition and signatures, along with a collection of communications from concerned parents to both the Board of Education and Mr. Simons for their review. Planning class sections for five separate elementary schools throughout the district must be, without a doubt, a challenging and complicated process. As parents, we are seeking to better understand why certain decisions are being made, while also ensuring that our concerns are heard. I understand that the K through five enrollment projections will be discussed later tonight. I look forward to hearing those discussion points. Thank you to the Board of Education, Mr. Simons, and Mr. Mahar for your consideration and for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
And I did acknowledge that Stephanie did forward her information to the board, the email, and it was shared. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, Stephanie, are you kind of representing a whole group of parents in this kind of communication? Is there anybody else from the Belltop committee who wants to speak? All right. So we, what's that?
I am representing the petition, but I can't, I can't for sure.
Yeah, of course, of course. If there's those who want to speak regarding the issue, you're welcome to come forward because it is a discussion item later, and we've heard from quite a few. Good. Okay. All right. Anyone else like to address the board this time? Yes. No, please come forward and just give us your name and your affiliation with the district.
Hi, my name is Paige Wood. My address, do you need my address? Is that what you said?
Just East Greenbush, North Greenbush.
East Greenbush. My son goes to Janey. I did not write anything down. I thought she did. But I'm here today to request that an armed guard or police officer be every day in each elementary school, especially at Janey. We have older kids there every day, and just, I've talked to many parents who would feel more comfortable knowing that there was somebody at the school prepared, you know, in case anything should happen in the future. So I, they're not here, well, some of them are, but a lot of them couldn't make it for work or childcare issues, but yeah, we would just like an armed guard or police officer. I initially thought about, like, retired police, like, if that was a thing that they could have as a part-time job, but I don't think that they're allowed to be in the school armed if you're not an active person. So I don't know if that's, like, you know, a thing that would be possible, but just an armed guard or police officer at all the elementary schools. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a quick comment in that, you know, the events of the last couple of weeks, even today, are pretty disturbing for all of us, you know, what's happened. I work for an organization that's kind of, is regional, the Bosse's, and they brought a disruption in paying a cost, trauma for people, was unbelievable. And, you know, this district has a strong history of supporting school safety. We have members of the Safety Committee on the Board, member, of Board members here. And, you know, protecting our students, protecting their families, protecting our staff is a, is a priority, you know? We've undertaken many building projects over the years to help our facilities, to make sure that they're safe, they're secure, and when they come to school as parents, you know they're in safe hands. The issue of SROs and things like that is a complicated one. We have talked about that internally, myself and Mr. Simons, and, you know, we do have them at our other schools right now, not the elementary. It comes down to really capacity of the local law enforcement agencies, the ability to sustain and fund SRO programs, because those who've been here over the years know how much it's changed over time. But I think it is something that we will look very closely at, given the events and what's happening, and what we can do to continue to provide a safe environment for our, our students and our staff and our families. Okay? So it's, it's, it's something that's very near and dear to a lot of us, and we will, we'll be talking about it more at length. I know we've had conversations with our local leaders through Mr. Simons, and the Safety Committee will be looking at this very closely, okay? Sure. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Guy?
My name is Krista Felice.
Hey.
I've been with transportation since ninety-seven. I was here when we had our shooting in two thousand and four. I was on a school bus on Thursday. We needed a different plan for the buses. We have wonderful plans for our schools. Every child that was in a building felt secure. They felt calm. We had four schools that were still on buses. We were sitting ducks at the schools. We do have a plan in place where we go off-site. We were brought back. I'm not sure whose choice it was to bring us back to school. When we park at our schools, we, some of us park on an angle, some of us are lined up individually, singly. It would only take one person to take out that first bus, that first driver, and the rest of us couldn't move. We couldn't go anywhere. Also, another problem that I had is, I had a parent... Also, another problem that I had is I had a parent who was still dealing with the trauma of being in Albany Med for their lockdown. She got her emails, she got her parent squares. She proceeded to come to my school, come to my bus, and try to break down my door. It took two officers to get her away from my bus. I think we just need to come up with a plan for transportation. We do have many plans for the schools. But we didn't have anything for these kids on these school buses. We were literally, and granted, I did the best I could. We had snack, we had a dance party, we read books, we played games. And the whole time I was sitting there going, how am I going to protect 38 kids? Where can I put 38 kids? There's only so many. I can go under a seat. There's only so many. I'm getting upset about it now.
Thank you for everything you did that day.
There wasn't any place for us to go.
So one of the things, and Mr. Simons and I did talk about this too. These kinds of events always bring forth different circumstances that may always be covered by plans. Is there a transportation representative on the Safety Committee that we can make sure that's participating?
We have had, that's what I was going to suggest. We're having a meeting tomorrow with the total administrative team. So Dr. McQueen will be in attendance at that meeting. We're going to discuss this very issue regarding the fact that kids were on buses when the lockdown was called. And they're on buses for a fairly protracted amount of time. So we're going to discuss that scenario in terms of what we might be able to do. I asked my secretary to move up the Safety Committee meeting. It wasn't scheduled until May, till right after the spring break. And I will reach out to Wanda and the Transportation Department to get some transportation drivers' input on that Safety Committee. We're going to dedicate that meeting solely to discussing what happened last Thursday and evaluating what went right, what didn't go so well, including really talking about this issue of what do we do in the event that the students are on a bus? I will say that everything we did that day was for the protection of students in coordination with law enforcement. But then we always have, as Mr. Buno said, kind of an after-action review to say, what could we have done differently? What should we have done better for the next scenario that's similar to this one? So I appreciate what you did that day, what all the drivers did that day, and the students. But we are going to be gathering some feedback and reevaluating our plans. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kreeval. I'm an East Greenbush resident and the PTO president actually at Janay Elementary. I just wanted to add one comment about the School Resource Officer specifically regarding Janay, because my biggest concern is we have four different access points. We have the pre-K, the CTAP, elementary, and admin. So I would like specifically to focus on Janay as far as if we could find the resources for an officer. I think they should be top priority because of that, you know, having the four different access points. Because that's a lot of different people. Yep. So that's just the comment I wanted to add. Thank you.
Good suggestion. All right, Jill, come on up. Cut in front.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jill Bonesteel. And just to play off of what Kristin had mentioned, that, you know, unfortunately, it's something that you don't ever think about, but it happens now. We actually had a great meeting today at the Bus Garage. I came into tail end of it. So we did do a lot of brainstorming on different ideas that I'm sure Wanda will be bringing to you for your meeting.
Thank you.
But I also wanted to mention that the group that's here tonight, as you all know, we are dedicated. We love these kids. Many of us have been here for a long time, myself included. And with that being said, I just want to make sure that, you know, as far as 19A stuff goes, that, you know, the CSEA staff is thought of first before, you know, any of the 19A work is handed out. And that we're just being fair. And that's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Is there some more folks want, sir? Yes.
Hello, I'm James from East Greenbush. I believe Mr. Simmons got an email from my wife, which is Christina Trifaletti. And he tried calling her, and the best way to kind of get a hold of her is by email, just to let you know. And just to play off a little bit of what the other parents and PTO president was saying with Janay. I feel that we should definitely have armed guards in all elementary schools because of the last two incidents, I believe, of the past year have been at elementary schools. And I would also like to maybe bring it even a step forward with not only armed guards, but I know you can get security systems now also, because the one in Texas I'm going to refer to is that what I guess a teacher left a door open and that was how the perpetrator was able to enter the school. Where if there's a way that we can have some sort of security system, you know, I mean, I can lock my doors in Massachusetts. You know, see if the garage door is open or whatever, you know, and shut it right from my smartphone. So I was wondering if there is a way where we can maybe do a little bit of an overhaul of the security system as well. I was at the PTO meeting last night and speaking to the parents there. And the principal, it seems like that the principal would maybe, there's a couple of spots where maybe he could put, you know, cameras that, you know, he can't, he couldn't see or something like that. But I just feel like that this is, I hear you guys, you know, you're big on safety. And I feel that, you know, that we need to come up with something kind of quickly with this, because tomorrow may be too late. And that's pretty much, you know, I agree with Paige. I feel like if there was a way where we could have maybe retired to maybe keep costs down, you know, whether it's, you know, retired police, state troopers, or, you know, military, ex-military with a, you know, background check and, you know, have training and stuff with arms. You know, we're not going to just put someone there, but, you know, they have to follow, kind of like being hired as a police officer. You know what I mean? And that's about it. Thank you very much for hearing me and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. So I just, what we'll do is on our next, or members on our next agenda, we'll have the Safety Meeting completed. Some things I don't think it's right to share about certain security precautions because of our own safety and our kids' safety. We do have systems in place, but I think we'll do a debrief, do one agenda item next week, and talk about one of these topics that have been brought up today. Hello?
My name is Denise Lena. I'm also a parent at Janay. I have a first grader and I have a two-year-old that will eventually go to Janay. I just want to echo my support for the other parents that are here as well. I know when people hear armed guard, they like instantly think like guns, 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 guns. And I don't think it's exactly that. It's more just having some kind of deterrence to get people to stay away. And I know that when we talked at our PTO meeting, it's not even just to have a guard there. But, you know, a lot of our kids are taught to kind of be afraid of what they're doing wrong in front of police rather than, hey, what am I doing right? Saying hi to a police officer, being comfortable going to them, and, you know, acknowledging that they're supposed to be there for our safety, not someone to be scared of. So not only are you helping them, you know, to feel more comfortable in a world that may be a bit more scary to them now that, you know, all this stuff is going on, but you're also providing protection, you know, around the clock at the school. So I just wanted to echo my support for them as well. And, you know, if it isn't the budget and we can't get that, I really think that a lot of the taxpayers in our community would support, you know, having those safety precautions in place.
Thank you. One of the things too, I'd encourage, and Mr. Mann here is a former SRO, and it's a very special program. They do more than just police work. They do make connections with kids and families. I would also ask parents that the school district has funds, right? We, you're going to be paying the freight on that kind of thing, so I think. But it's important that you reach out to your political leaders too and put pressure on them. You know, the state, the federal, and the local, they're the ones that are going to provide the resources and their resources are stretched thin. They need to recruit people. You have funding issues. Why don't they fund? They used to fund the SRO programs at the state and federal level. Let's advocate for those things. We can certainly see a lot of their funding streams. So working together inter-agency with our political leadership, with the school district, they want to be able to provide these resources to families. So it, but it's got to be a cooperative effort. So, you know, that's really, I think, another piece of the puzzle here is helping to put the pressure on them to say, we need this as a school community. Please help us. Mr. Simons can answer that?
Yes, when we went to, the advocacy committee went down to the legislature, I believe it was last month. And we met with our representatives of the dedicated fund for school safety, including being able to hire school resource officers with a dedicated fund from the state was one of our advocacy requests.
Mr. McDonald was here at the last, no, two meetings ago.
Yes.
He covers all this territory now. He used to cover this little spot of North Greenbush. So he is representing the majority of the East Greenbush, North Greenbush community. So John's been there a long time, and I think if you reach out to him, he's very responsive. He can also help support these kinds of initiatives.
Speaking of the PTO president, I will be reaching out because I hope that we can work with the committee to kind of play out the point that
The advocacy committee? Great. Yeah, if you could reach through all the PTOs, things like that, that's a wonderful avenue for our parents. You know, we, we as a board and we were parents, right? The parent support for our elementary schools and different middle and high school is critical to the success of our schools. And parent voice is important to me, even though my kids are, my last child has graduated. It's still an important part of who I am and what I, you know, want to be and to help support our community.
I know it's out of order, but I'd like to just add a little bit to this conversation.
Sure.
And for the parents, I can tell you, I'm a retired police officer. And there is a lot to the SRO, armed security and things. I can tell you as a board member, I had a child that was in Columbia at the time of the school shooting. I had two nieces and nephews. So I understand fully how you feel, and so does some of the other board members. And so even though it might not seem it to you, we are continuing to advocate. We are continuing to try to find the resources because this is a priority. So we do understand for the transportation staff, I can tell you, there are plans in place, but a plan can always be improved. And that's where this board and this administration really targets. But the greater issue that communities face is a crisis in law enforcement right now. I can tell you as an example, I've worked the city of Albany. They have 65 vacancies right now in the city of Albany. All right, just down from 340. North Greenbush the same, East Greenbush the same, Rensselaer, Rensselaer County sheriffs. So our will is to advocate your message. But unfortunately, until we can solve the law enforcement crisis in this country, we're going to have to be really creative. And the other component to being creative, we are bound by the state rules and regulations on how to do these things. So your voices are heard, and I want you to know that. And you have real, I know, I know what it feels like to have a child in a school when this is going down without cell phone. I jumped in and directed traffic, and Mark can address it, Kathleen can address it. So when you talk about safety, it's a bigger backroom conversation than you can ever really have to us. But most importantly, going back to what Mike and Mr. Simon said, the advocacy, don't stop. Keep us in the loop, participate, but also the pressure has to go to the state level for these issues. Because if it was up to us, it'd be done tomorrow. So, and that's not an excuse for us. I'm just, I'm giving you the rationale and the logic behind it, not only as a board member, but a community member from a law enforcement perspective, but also as a parent who had that every time I see these things, I know what really went down and how it went down. So it's not on deaf ears. And thank you for the opportunity to address the folks.
Yeah, I think that it is unusual that we have more of a conversational public forum. But I think because the topics were so important to all of us, I wanted to take the time and make sure we're committed to the work that we do here. And it's important to hear your voice. And like I said, we don't typically respond well. We thought this was a really important topic. Several important points brought up. We learned some things. We've got some notes and we'll definitely be in touch. Hi, yes.
Can I just say something as a parent? I got stuck in the drop-off line outside Belltop during the lockdown process. As a parent, I can tell you, I felt safe handing my children to a detective to go into the school during the lockdown process because everything was so smooth. There were detectives in plain clothing. There were people in the school checking it. My son texted me from Columbia High School and said, Mom, we're in here for the A47s. They're sweeping the school. They expect the school door closed. It is so safe in our locker room.
Good.
All of these police officers in our area have kids in these schools. So, you know, one of the things I noticed, I was here at Belltop and a kid in the school. Columbia High School, there's, Quat has kids in the school. The chief of police has kids in the school. I mean, and I don't think that that makes any difference with how they handle the situation. Not only do they handle it seamlessly and make them kill, but they moved all of the resources over here on State Police, the Rensselaer County Sheriff. And I watched while I picked my son up from Columbia High School. It was, there was work leads there to East Greenbush, one state, one Rensselaer county. They were making sure everybody coming in was good. I mean, it really was. From the outside looking in, there's nothing. I will say, the experience that was to know from the real lockdown and on the drill, I think that everybody did a wonderful job.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it. Okay. Yes, sir. Sneaking in at the last minute. Come on up.
Yeah, I just, I just want to bring the board to just say that, you know, there's a lot of great school bus drivers out there. My wife has one, been one for 20-something years. And just listening to some of the stories, when the kids are on the school bus for over two hours, small kids have to go to the bathroom. How do you talk a little kid for two hours that they can't go to the bathroom? You know, a lot of them did things on the bus to keep their minds off of it. You've got a large group of people that do a lot for the kids. A school bus driver is the first one in the morning that gets the kids going and the last ones that send them home. You know, through a lot of things that happen, I've gotten a lot of parents that have called the house to talk to my wife over the things that she's done. I employ a FedEx and a UPS guy just bringing things to my house, little game, stickers, different things that she does for the kids on the bus. And I know a lot of the other drivers do that. I don't know if any of you have been a bus driver, but a teacher can stand there and look at all their kids face to face. A bus driver has to maintain order through a mirror. They have to have a great relationship with a kid. It takes a special person to be a bus driver. Any one of these drivers could probably go out with a commercial license and get an easier job with more pay and probably a lot less aggravation, but they love their job and they love their kids. You know, so I just wanted to say that, you know, they need a little more appreciation. Maybe if you take small groups of them and try to see what some of the issues are and kind of combine all those ideas together, maybe you can come up with an idea to one, boost morale, make people feel more that they're appreciated. I know that's a big thing. I work in the construction industry and we're supposed to thank people, pat them on the back, tell them what a great job they did. It's a new world. And I think, you know, the attitude there, I think, is that they're looking down on them, like they're here. You know what I mean? But in reality, they're way up here. Because like I said, if the ride's no good in the morning, it's not good in the rest of the day. My wife did handicap kids for a long time, and the parents are always, the teachers are even commending. Thank you for being the bus driver you are, because you get the kids in a great mood when they come in. It's a great day for the rest of the kids in the class. You have to realize that. They're the start of an education. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Very well said. All right. Anyone else? We're going to move on to the next portion of our meeting and a lot of discussion topics and things like that to move forward on. So thank you very much for all your comments and input. It's, we took notes, we heard you, and we'll be following you. So thank you. All right. We do have a report and presentation for the student schools on school safety.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. And thank you to all the speakers and the public comments and those that took time to attend the meeting this evening. those that took time to attend the meeting this evening. I want to congratulate the district. If the bus drivers could stay for just a minute, I think this is really an important, because this is a reflection, this is a reflection on your work and all of the things that you do. Our district for 20 years in a row, from Utica National Insurance, which is the district's, district insurance broker, has received the Utica National Insurance Safety Excellence Award. For 19 years, we received the Titanium Award. And this year, we are receiving the Titanium, I think it's the Titanium Plus. It's, it's the highest level of award. Why is this award a given? It's because of the low number of accidents on our property, the low number of accidents with our buses, the rating that the Transportation Department receives from the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, the care and the work that is done by all of the staff and the students within each of the buildings, the parents. So it covers a number of different safety indicators. And I'm very, very pleased to present this award to Mr. Bino on behalf of Utica National Insurance for us receiving for 20 years in a row, recognition as being one of the safest school districts in the state. Congratulations.
No, I didn't, I didn't do anything for this award. This is not my award, but I gladly accept it on your behalf. And we'll hang it proudly in our boardroom with some more other safety words. So thank you for all the work you do to protect our kids, for driving safely on the road, and for our staff for being safe out there and having an interest in safety and stay involved in safety. It's an important part of our, like I said, our culture earlier. And thank you to Utica for the, for the award. So appreciate you sticking around and hearing that. And thank you again. All right. So starting to clear out a little bit, but I know we have a topic of discussion, the K5 enrollment projections. For our next discussion item for 2324, the topic came up during public forum, and it's something that we also talked about a few meetings ago, as we developed our budget, and how we look at the enrollment across the district at the elementary and other levels. So Mr. Simon, can you interest the topic?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Goodman to pull up the spreadsheet. And I'm just going to walk over there. This won't be a formal presentation, but it's easier for me to see the numbers and to point out some issues with our parents concerned regarding class sizes.
This is on our laptops too, board members, okay? Because I can't see that, that's for sure.
So one of the things I want to first emphasize is looking at enrollment across each of our five elementary schools, our middle school and our high school, happens at different intervals during the year. And particularly as we start to think about the budget, the board has already received one of these spreadsheets that had different numbers on it a couple of meetings ago. We adjust these numbers based on a number of different factors. Kindergarten registration, for example, occurred in the months of February and March. We now have a pretty good idea of how many kindergartners are projected to come into each school. That is also a little bit fluid, because we have kids that receive certain services that may not be offered in the school. So we have to do an assessment and review those numbers. But these numbers will also change between now and the time the budget is adopted in May, and they will change again between May and likely September. We monitor it very closely. We evaluate it all of the time. And we try to look at class sizes that are not only within our parameters, are lower than our parameters. And we also look at the specific needs of the students in every building. We have conversations with principals, principals talk to teachers, they know the kids well. So we try to look at it not only from a numbers standpoint, but an academic and sometimes social emotional needs of the children. So this is where we stand right now. This will not necessarily be the final numbers of kids enrolled in each grade level and each building, but this is where we stand right now. So kindergarten registration was completed. We looked at the number of kindergarten students who had registered. At this point, it stood at 20 students. There are a couple of students within those students that registered with Belltop who may require ENL services. And if that assessment is being done, and if those students receive those services, they would go to either Red Mill or Janay where our ENL program. So right now kindergarten stands at 20 per section, two sections. The current year, this year, there's three sections. So we made an adjustment from three sections to two for now. And the color coding represents that, that kindergarten grade level at Belltop has been reduced from three to, two sections for next year. Could change. We, we are projecting to move the kindergarten section to first grade because the first grade numbers were of concern with the number of kindergartners coming in from three kindergarten sections, moving into three first grade sections. So right now, first grade class sizes are looking at 15, 15, and 16. We recognize that grade two and grade three is still a concern. We've heard the, we've received all the emails, and we have those concerns noted. We appreciate the parents coming this evening. We are watching this. Okay. One of our timelines is not only considerations for the budget, but by June 1st, under the teacher's contract, we have to let the teachers know what their assignment is. So in some cases, we make adjustments between now and June 1st. We always include within the budget enough flexibility to be able to recognize that enrollment shifts up in some buildings, it shifts down. There's monies in the budget to be able to address class sizes in general at the K5 level, should the board determine to do so. And then grade four and grade five, we are recommending a reduction at this point of the number of sections in grade four from three to two. And again, the larger group of kids moving from grade four into grade five. So the third section shifts from grade four to grade five. So within Belltop, as it stands right now, there are 14 total teachers, common branch teachers dedicated to K5 sections, and are projected next year to be 14 sections. Doesn't mean it's, it's not going to change. And again, just to reiterate, we have to watch kindergarten because that can change. We have to watch grade two, and we have to watch grade three. DPS, we've made some adjustments there. One of the things we look at, at Donald P. Southern in school, it is a Title I school. And generally, the students that come in to kindergarten, in some cases, may, there may be more students at that school that have particular needs for academic support. So we try to keep the class sizes at DPS lower when we can. So DPS, 14 sections this year, 14 sections next year. Janay, Janay is a larger building with more classrooms, able to accommodate a larger enrollment. One thing that I forgot to say was in general, with the exception of special programs, we assign kids at the elementary school level based on where they live. More kids live in the Janay attendance zone than live in the Belltop zone. Janay also houses more special education programs than Belltop currently does. So we have to accommodate those kids, particularly if they're pushed in for art, music, and specials. So again, the numbers reflect a growing enrollment at Janay, including a growing ENL population. We had, for example, 85 kids register for kindergarten, so we needed to increase the number of kindergarten sections there. And we have to increase the number of sections in fourth grade. So Janay right now is projected to add two classes next year compared to what they have this year. But you see that, and, and in general, their class sizes are below the district's guidelines. Green Meadow, very similar. Green Meadow's attendance zone is larger, has more kids than DPS and Belltop. And we're suggesting that the same number of sections that are in the current year would be projected for next year. And then Red Mill, Red Mill has had, had a lot of kindergartners come in and register this year. Five sections of kindergarten this year. We're recommending at this point to reduce it to four. Again, moving the cohort forward to first grade. This is what it's going to look like at Red Mill, keeping the same number of sections. We do have situations where the enrollment shifts in the summer. And so again, as I emphasized before, we reserve some monies in the budget to be able to address those shifts. But as it stands right now, as a district, K through five across all buildings, we are projecting that we would move from 91 total classrooms, K through five to 93 next year. Again, it's very fluid. And if we get to a point, if we go back, Peter, to the Belltop numbers, if we get to a point where the numbers in second grade, for example, stay the same or increase, we would have to, we would have to take another look at it between now and the summer. So we're doing what we can to adjust based on what we know. But there's a lot of information that will change because of, we have kids move in, in schools, we have kids that move out. We have shifts that occur within the district where kids move from one neighborhood to the next. There are some kids, for example, that have already moved, that I've given special permission for them to stay in accordance with policy for the remainder of the year, but they will be going to different schools. So all of those things are factored into the registration. And then we look at what the final numbers are. We try to be equitable across all buildings. We can't be equal because of considerations such as the number of classrooms, the number of teachers, the budget, and special programs that are located within each of the schools. So all those things go together to try to do what we think is the best thing that we can do for class sizes at the K5 level.
Board members, any questions at this point? It's not an open forum, I'm sorry. There's a public forum later if you want to stick around. Okay. So a couple of things come to mind when we look at these charts. Obviously, the, the, the Belltop community we're here, Belltop today, as we push into some of these numbers where it's 25, you know, we have to look at the academic data. You know, I've asked the district to provide me with, and provide the board with some performance information in terms of the student population, how things are academically. Can we look at a different mix? Do we need to look at teaching assistance to support the, the teachers? If we can't do a full-time section, I think that as things adjust between now and the board meeting, that we adopted the budget, what kind of services are our students receiving in, in the, in the school? And also to make sure that they're receiving the services, and if we have to shift some things to support. So I think that it's, you hate to say the word, please be patient. But the budget is, is evolving. The numbers are high in those grades. And we need to address it in some form or fashion to be consistent with our expectations for our classrooms, but also for the academic support that students may need and teachers may need to make sure that they're getting the services they need. But also, again, one thing I did look at before the meeting too, is that this is a very high performing school here at Belltop, and I think already the data supports that. There's not a lot of students that have academic intervention services, which is great. That means there's a lot of parent support, a lot of things happening within the school, and the kids are doing well. So I think that, kind of those combination of factors, we're all going to look at to make sure we make the right decision for all our schools to support our students. And obviously, these, these numbers are, are high. And we'll see how things, you know, two or three kids drop off here and there, it could make a big difference. So, okay.
Jeff, is there a ideal count in the classroom? And I know it probably varies a little bit depending, you know, maybe third grade versus fourth grade, but what do we really strive for?
There's really not an ideal count. I'll start with what the, the parameters are in the contract, and then I'll work for what's really more realistic. Our guidelines for class sizes are 25 for kindergarten, 27 for first grade through fifth grade. It's been a long time. In fact, I think there were probably only two examples or three examples that in my time here, it's my seventh year, where classes were approaching 26 or 27, and there were outlying classes. So we tend to try to keep our kindergarten, first grade and our second grade classes lower because of the need to really provide an academic focus. We teach reading at the K2 level. We want to make sure that we're able to accommodate those kids. So as you get up into the intermediate grades, third, fourth, and fifth, you tend to have a little bit higher class sizes, depending on the number of kids. In buildings that have special education students at those grade levels, as I said, sometimes those kids are put into the class for special areas. So you might have the numbers showing that there are 19 students in a first grade class, but you might have three first graders who are, in according with their IEP, going in for art class, for music class, for phys ed class. So those numbers are really 22 in those circumstances. So all of that, all of those factors get looked at. There's generally not an ideal level. As you get up into the, the middle school and the high school, you can see classes between 25 and 30. And at the high school, you can see it up to 30. But we've made a strategic effort since the pandemic, and the kids coming back from the, the hybrid to have our class sizes lower than what was typical prior to the pandemic.
No, I think that we, we will look at the budget, as Mr. Simon says, build capacity into the budget so we can have, if those enrollment shifts happen, we can easily add if we have to.
Yep.
The other thing, yes, one?
I just want to say, I also share concerns about Belltop. I understand that some schools have a number of potential, I appreciate that. But when you look from, say, six, a difference of six children, that's significant. It's not fair to the kids. It's not fair to the future. It's more children to teach, it's a lot on the future. We really appreciate the hard look. And saying that Belltop has engaged parents and almost inferring that it's okay if their numbers are a little bit higher.
It was not inferring that to him.
Okay.
At all. I mean, it's more about the fact that this is a really good community, and the parents are very involved, like other places. And it was not inferring that we would purposely increase enrollment for that reason.
Okay. And I appreciate that. But I also don't think that we should hold that parent, that against the parents. If they're engaged and participating, we shouldn't assume that because they're participating that we can put more stress on the kids and the teachers here.
Well, that was definitely not my intention. I mean, I just indicated.
I just want to clarify.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I think that that's important because I did just say that if the shifts happen and we need to have support, Mr. Simon's the numbers, we'll, we'll put the, put people in the budget to support.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Okay. So again, I apologize if the inference was, was there. Okay. All right. We'll be on to the next item. We have the preliminary budget, 2324.
Yes, the public may be aware, the board may be aware that the New York State budget has not been settled yet, nor passed. The negotiations are still continuing. We were advised that the budget may come to a final agreement, maybe around the week of April 17th or 18th this week. So we really haven't made any changes to the budget that was presented at the March 22nd meeting. But I just wanted to provide the board with a snapshot summary because there were some board members that weren't in attendance, and also as a review for the community who may not have been watching the last meeting. We started the process of presenting the board to the public at our first public workshop on March 8th. At the time, we had proposed a 1% increase in the tax levy. We brought that down to a 0.5% increase in the tax levy. And we proposed that the total revenues from the levy at this point would be $58.7 million. That represents about a reduction from the first budget of $291,000. So a half a percent tax levy increase yields about $291,000 of revenue to the district. We also presented some information at the last meeting that I want to just briefly highlight, that this proposed tax levy increase is such a small increase as opposed to the rate at which our tax base in East Greenbush is growing, that many taxpayers will see either no change or a modest change, including many taxpayers seeing a reduction because we're, we're growing as a district. Our tax base has grown. Um, but at this point, uh, this is where we're projecting, uh, after two years of a 0% tax levy at 0.5. Um, state aid, um, the number that we are utilizing right now is $35.3 million. Our state aid was adjusted in February based on certain, uh, indicators in the formula. It went down slightly, about $137,345. We don't know what our final state aid will be in the budget. We're hoping it will be the same or even a little bit more, but we don't know anything. Uh, more than what we've been told is that the foundation aid will likely be about the same. But one of the interesting points we're waiting to hear on is the tuition reimbursement for the pre-K. Because if we do get an adjustment and we're reimbursed more for tuition for pre-K, that will have an impact on our general fund budget. And we might, uh, if we see that, we might be able to make some changes. Uh, additionally, other revenues include such things as the payment in lieu of taxes agreements, which we've talked about pilot agreements. They include fees that we charge for, um, use of facilities, uh, fees for events. They include Medicaid reimbursement for students who receive certain Medicaid eligible programs. So at this point in time, and again, once we have the state budget, we'll know a little bit more about what we can change. And I'm still inviting feedback from the board and the community. We are proposing a 1.108.8 million dollar budget, uh, and we've reduced the budget since its first presentation on March 8th, about $291,000. Uh, revenues are matching with expenditures, and we've shared this, uh, at the last meeting. We made an adjustment from a full-time FTE music teacher to a half-time. We can provide a dedicated strings teacher at the elementary school level with only a half a position and not a full-time position. We are proposing an adjustment to golf staffing to be able to address enrollment in the seventh and eighth grade, which has increased to a point where in order to get within our class sizes, we need some, uh, some part-time positions. We talked about teaming, moving to full teaming, restoring full teaming at sixth grade, uh, with, uh, the need for a full-time sixth grade teacher. We removed the, uh, increases to, uh, our physical education staff. We removed some of the monies dedicated and requested for professional development. We have other sources of funds, including Title II aid, as well as textbook funds that can be shifted. So that has been coming out of the budget. Mr. Bickel has agreed to purchase the snow plow, uh, excuse me, the salter and, uh, the plow associated with the truck he requested out of his general equipment budget next year, reducing that, uh, expenditure by 15,000 for the snow plow and the salter seventh. So it's about 22,500 pulled out of the budget. Uh, we've reduced the request for office furniture for the transportation department to 15, by $15,000, and we made an adjustment to our benefits line, which includes our health insurance and retirement for our employees. So those were the changes that we made, uh, representing about a $291,000 reduction in the budget, which is the same number as that half a percent reduction in the tax levy. And that's where we stand at this point.
Any questions, Board members? So at our next meeting, prior to our next meeting, Linda will prepare a more detailed budget binder that we're used to, will show them where the line by item details of the budget. Um, at this point, the budget will be basically a, a wash in terms of the tax levy for taxpayers. And we're not really a tax increase.
Well, the point, the 0.5 is an increase to the levy.
Yep.
But many, we did a, for example, 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 example at the last meeting, a $250,000 home, and we applied current equalization rates and this 0.5 increase. And it showed that many, many people's tax rates actually go down because you're spreading that increase over a much bigger pie. So, uh, I can't say for certain that 100% of the taxpayers will see a reduction in their tax bill. I can, I can say that many taxpayers will see no change or a reduction, depending on what happens with their property assessments, uh, with their equalization rates, which is not something that the board controls.
True.
Giving us that 0.5 gives us a little bit extra revenue and breathing room in the budget. Should we need to do things such as add class sizes, possibly, possibly talk about safety? We, we need room to be able to respond to various issues that may come up.
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Thank you.
Moving on to regular business, approval of programs for residents, children, disabilities. Questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? John, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. We have a tax litigation settlement proposal. Board members, I hope you've read that settlement. Just need to approve that. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. And important topic for everyone, the school calendar for next year.
A couple of years. Just wanted to make a somewhat humorous remark. A couple of years ago, because the weather was so good, we started talking about whether we could take, go from five days to four snow days, and then look what happened this year. So, uh, this calendar is pretty traditional. It has the five snow days built in. It has, uh, the professional development days and superintendent's days, the same as they are this year. Uh, note, the February break, uh, is the 19th through the 23rd. The spring break is the 1st through the 5th, early spring break next year. Hopefully, it feels like spring. Um, and then we have the same days for parent conferences and, um, uh, holidays, including the observance of one Jewish holiday. The other Jewish holiday that we built into the calendar last year, I believe it was, uh, falls on a Sunday, Saturday into a Sunday. So we, we do not need to, um, consider that this year.
Any questions on the calendar? Comments? One of the things I've always admired about this district is that there's so much professional development built in for our staff. And I think, you know, these recent events have happened. It's important to utilize that time. And we do a lot, a lot of things about trauma, social emotional learning, other activities that, you know, we can continue to focus our efforts on helping our staff and do professional development around some of the things that they're, they're experiencing that they can help our kids and families with too, and themselves. Wellness is critical for, for everyone. So with that, uh, need a motion to approve the calendar. Jennifer, who else? Kathleen, all those in favor? Looking for some different hand. All approved. All right. We'll be on to committee reports briefly. Um, Marissa?
Thank you, Mr. Bino. I'll just touch on some of, some of the highlights. Um, our Director of Business and Finance, um, posting closed, and we have 17, um, applicants. Mr. Simons and I are currently reviewing candidate applications, and we will be scheduling interviews, um, for later this month. Our Director of People Personnel Services, um, closed yesterday on the 3rd, and, um, we have 22 applicants that applied. Um, so we also will be reviewing those applications. Um, for our instructional vacancies, um, since, um, this memo was written, we've also posted all of our retirements thus far. So you'll notice on our district employment page, we have some music, art, um, and reading positions. Um, in terms of our non-instructional vacancies, we have, um, several positions vacant in our transportation department. We are still trying to recruit an automotive mechanic. Um, we have, um, bus driver vacancies. We have five of them right now. Um, our most recent interviews occurred on Monday, the 3rd. Um, we have seven individuals who are currently in the training process. Um, one of those individuals, um, is ready to take the road test as of the 19th, Dr. McQueen informed me. So hopefully, we'll have a new candidate recommendation on the next board meeting. Um, and then we also have tonight, um, a bus aide who's been working very hard on getting her CDL. Um, she was able to, um, pass with flying colors the other week. Um, and, um, Catherine Roberts is on tonight's consent agenda as a bus driver. So she'll be resigning from her bus aide position. Um, we have, um, a few bus aide resignations that we're actively recruiting for. Um, our central receiving worker was finally approved by the Rensselaer County Civil Service. Um, and that individual, um, is on tonight's consent agenda for recommendation for approval. And then we also have the Human Resources Recruiter, um, that was approved. Um, this title, uh, we had originally submitted as HR Generalist. They had, um, uh, asked that we change that to an HR Recruiter. Um, and that recommendation is also on tonight's consent agenda. Um, Mr. Bickel and I are working on filling, um, some upcoming custodial worker retirements. Um, Mr. Morrow is going to be retiring effective May 2nd. Um, that posting for the Educational Technology Specialist closed. Um, and, um, Mr. Goodwin is conducting interviews, um, on April 6th. And then Mr. Mahar has two monitor vacancies that we are, um, recruiting for, and, um, we have just recently posted in the Times Union, so we're hoping, um, we can attract some candidates.
So if you know anybody out there, right, Mr. Mahar, um, Marissa, the PPS director, any, what'd you say about applications there?
22.
No, that wasn't PPS.
22 applications for Director PPS. It closed yesterday.
Oh, okay.
And then 17 for Director of Business.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Board members? All right. Linda is not here. Um.
Nothing for tonight.
Nothing for tonight. Thank you. And Mr. Simons?
Uh, yes, we did have a health and safety meeting on March 27th. That was prior to the events of last Thursday. Uh, we heard an update from our school resource officers, Deputy Gravel at Goth Middle School and Officer Ed Ashley at the high school. They're doing a lot to engage with students. They're going into classrooms. Uh, they're also bringing in some outside resources to be able to provide training on such things as, uh, uh, drug and alcohol topics, as well as keeping safe online. Uh, one of the things we also, um, have in place now in the community, and I'll bring this to everybody's attention tomorrow, April 5th, is the day at which, uh, we will start in a community enforcing, um, uh, the, uh, the fees and fines related to individuals who choose to pass school buses. We have a new program, thanks to the leadership of Mr. Mann, our board vice president, and the county, that, um, that is a Bus Stop Arm Camera Program. Every single 102 or 103 buses within our district have a special camera on them. Should somebody irresponsibly choose to pass a bus, uh, their license plate, make of their vehicle, uh, will be captured on the camera, uh, and they will be issued a fine, which is coordinated through a program called Bus Stop, and also the county. Uh, we've had a grace period in which the cameras were installed. The photos have been being taken. Uh, disappointingly, you would be surprised by the number of individual people who choose to pass a school bus in this country, uh, and potentially put a student or, uh, uh, bus driver or aide at risk. So, um, this will be enforced starting tomorrow. We're encouraging everybody to be mindful of our school buses, and this is a program that we are offering the community free of charge. The cost associated with the equipment, the enforcement of the fines, all comes from the company, and, uh, they make their money through, uh, collecting a portion of the fine, and then they share some of that with various jurisdictions. So that is in place now. Um, additionally, we, uh, had our principals report out, uh, the various lockdown drills that they have been holding, as well as other types of drills. We drill on a regular basis. Uh, we have, uh, lockdown drills, fire drills, evacuation drills we've been conducting this year. And we're also going to be drilling in scenarios that are less structured. For example, when kids are passing through the hallway at the high school, when kids are in the cafeteria, and we're going, the, the principals have plans to do those types of drills during the coordinate, during, with coordination of law enforcement to see how students would respond. Uh, Stop It is a new program with information that was rolled out last week. Stop It is an anonymous tip line that students and parents can have on their phone. This is a free product that came through a grant that Questar Bosse has. So if you know of somebody who is considering harming themselves or potentially putting others at risk through an anonymous system, you can report that through an app. That app will connect to a call center. The call center will contact either an administrator or a law enforcement officer, depending on the, uh, the, um, nature of the incident. Uh, and that is something that we have rolled out for the, um, uh, at this point, the, um, the fifth graders through the 12th graders. I believe we're starting in middle school and high school, and they're going to be eventually working down to the fifth graders. Recent online behaviors, uh, that is another free service that is being provided through Bosse's. This is different in the fact that if we have students in our zip codes who are doing things that are concerning online, uh, we find out about it, and we're able to hook those students up with a counselor. We've had three or four reports since the time that we've received this service, and our high school administrator and middle school administrators and counselors have interviewed to find out if there's really something going on with a child or other, just kind of, you know, exploring different things on the internet that, that, um, that causes concern. The school nurses gave us a report. Thankfully, we're, we're pretty much dealing with very few instances of flu or COVID right now. Uh, happy to report that AED pads and batteries, which were as an issue across the country, where we couldn't get replacements for our AED pads and batteries. We did receive our shipment, and those have been installed by our maintenance department. Uh, and then we had a postponement of a workshop that, uh, our staff was invited to called Talcop to May 24th, which is a very, a national program that presents information on vaping and other products that kids are, that companies are manufacturing various devices that are perhaps unrecognizable to adults, where kids are vaping and, uh, experimenting with other types of, uh, drug use, including marijuana. Um, so a lot of good things talked about at the Safety Committee, including a grant that we're now receiving from the Commissioner of Mental Health for $10,000 at the high school and $10,000 at the middle school for, uh, student, staff, and parent awareness of mental health. And Mr. Styles in the SCL Committee and our principals and counselors will be providing us with some feedback as to how we want to spend that grant. Again, we're, our partnerships are yielding a lot of outside resources. Our partnerships with law enforcement with Questar and with our county commissioner of mental health.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Any questions, comments?
Can we have in the upcoming meetings, uh, an update on vaping, the vaping devices? I, I still hear it's pretty rampant in Columbia. It's pretty high in, in Gulf Middle School now. And, and I can read here that it, it says the, you know, the alerts are time consuming to investigate. So of the four that we have are the efficient. Should we look at other things in the future? And if they're efficient, we really need to start spreading out to the middle school.
We did talk about that briefly at the meeting, and we plan to follow up at the next meeting, and we'll talk about it a little bit more. We did, I did float the idea of purchasing more for the high school and the middle school with a settlement that we received, and, um, waiting some feedback from the principals and the security supervisors regarding that. But yes.
It, it does say, I mean, if it, if that's true, it says it's time consuming to investigate. Are they the right ones for us? Or are there other options?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the suggestions that we received from one of our safety supervisors was that we have the manufacturer themselves do the installation if we purchase more. Apparently, we didn't do that the last time. So that was one of the suggestions that came from Jeff Ware from the high school. But one of the issues, the kids figure out where the vaping, where the vaping detectors are, and they use other restrooms. So we've got to, uh, adjust.
I'd like to know how much it would be to cover all of them. Because otherwise.
We, we can get that information. Yes, we can get that information.
And isolate them after that.
And then put people in there all day.
I would want to add on this. In every instance, I'm sorry, Mr. Bino, in every instance where we have a student who is disciplined for vaping, I ensure through talking with the principals that the drug and alcohol prevention program that we have through the county, that that student is referred to that. Because it's not just an issue of discipline. In many cases, these students are addicted to the substances that they're ingesting through vaping devices.
And with that settlement that we're going to be getting that we, um, jumped on board with, you know, might be good to just take those funds and reinvest it and into, you know, some additional vaping detectors and, and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I have the same questions that you did, Michelle, and I was gonna ask if we had, um, grant funding for possibly for Goth, but I forgot about the settlement that's coming. Um, I also have heard that it's, it's very problematic at Goth as well.
It is.
Yeah.
Caneful.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a statewide national issue right now that all districts are trying to respond to, but.
Yeah. Anything else, Board members? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, table motions. I have none. All been. Okay, moving on to table motions. I have none. All business board members, anything? Coming up, nope. Moving on to consent agenda, I may ask that we include the addendum fourteen A with the consent. That was a late addition to. Field trip requests, because our, our kids are going to the state tournament, which is great. Any comments or questions on the consent, consent agenda items, A through I and fourteen A? Yes, Joanne.
Just a quick congratulations to the retirees that are listed and a special shout out to Maggie Blenny, who truly has been a ray of sunshine in this district. Um, always happy, always supportive. Uh, when Ed Foundation did dessert nights. Um, I usually coordinated it and the dessert nights were always in April. And every January second, Maggie would call me and she'd say, Joanne, what day do you have? I need to mark my calendar and she was there with the kids singing, um, just a wonderful, wonderful lady.
Thanks, Joanne.
Mike. Just in, in reference to after Columbia High School Costa Rica trip. I would ask that, number one, that, um, we're making sure we're checking the state department's website for travel advisories. In that any information that is going to go home to parents about this trip. That we also, uh, put that information on there so parents can themselves go and, and, and check. Um, to make sure there are no, uh, travel advisories for that area.
That's a good suggestion, Mark. Thank you. We will make sure that that happens. This is, this is being planned for next year. Uh, so we have time to make sure that we. Provide all that information and that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still looking for chaperones, Mr. White? Need more kids? Costa Rica sounded nice. All right. Trying to inject a little humor here, I guess. The, uh, consent agenda, any other questions, items? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the consent agenda. John, second, Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. New business board members, anything? We had a couple of topics we wanted to follow up in, in terms of, um, earlier discussions. On the safety. The addendum I included in the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Okay. And then the new business would be really follow up on the questions of safety and things like that with S R O's and things like that. Um, public forum number two. Opportunities. I didn't mean to cut you off before, but this is our opportunity if you want to talk. I'd like to. It's a, it is a, yeah, so you gotta be on the video and it's all recorded and things like that. Thank you.
So just on the, on the topic of Belltop.
We're just naming.
Oh, I'm Natalie Mulligan. I'm a Belltop parent and I'm also a Columbia High School parent. So as of September of twenty twenty-three, Kathy Hochul and Mayor Adams, Eric Adams set a law in New York City that no more than twenty students be in a class. In New York City. Research shows that nineteen to twenty students in a class is ideal. So while East Greenbush Central School District doesn't have an idea, studies do have an idea on data to back that. Looping teachers is also shown successful in classrooms. So I don't know if that was an idea that you guys could, you know, bop around looping. I would love that. Uh, to say that the support in Bell, as for Belltop parents is high is a rather moot point. Just because kids have the support at home doesn't mean our children don't deserve more individualized attention, smaller class sizes for success. After pandemic and teachers that are exhausted. My daughter is in A I S math and I have spent seventy dollars a week since she was in kindergarten. On a tutor for math as well as reading. She's reads above her grade level now. She still struggles in math. I am a parent who works part-time. We are home with them every single night. As a parent that overwhelmingly approves the budget and parents from Belltop that over, overly approve the budget each year. I'm a little apprehensive to give a yes this year for the budget since I feel as my children. Aren't going to reap, reap any of the benefits of it and the money gets diverted to other elementary schools within the district. Not that other elementary schools mean less or that the high school and middle school mean less either, but. Belltop's numbers are. Like Ms. Taylor said, the difference between four or five, six kids, it's huge in those grades, first, second and third grade. It's a, those tiny numbers might seem tiny to you. It's a lot of kids in a room. They're very small rooms. They have one teacher. Sometimes, you know, they have aides coming in and out, but they're, they're very, very small. Um. So my children didn't divert kids to Janay to break up the school. They didn't approve new construction within the district to move lines. But yet they have to deal with the consequences and decisions outside of their control. And I would like this, the board to consider that when considering the class sizes within Belltop. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Mr. Gregnon?
Good evening, everyone. Wayne Gregnon, principal of Janay. Just wanted to give a shout out to the character ed team at Janay. We had a wonderful family reading night on March sixteenth. We have, uh, had over a hundred and forty-three parents participate. Tons of kids were there. Um, we actually had one of our substitutes in the district who's a local author, actually started at Belltop, now works in the district. She actually came, Veronica Backman. Did a great presentation to our students. Um, we also had a very successful, um, STEM fair this past on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth. We had over fifty, I think we had fifty-four projects, which had, um, a little over eighty-three students participate. A lot of kids actually teamed up this year, which was really cute to see them do. Well-attended event, so kudos to, uh, Joan Davis, one of our fourth grade teachers. And Michelle Martino, one of our reading teachers who have coordinated that event. And also I want to recognize our parent volunteers who. Um, created this year for Janay, first time ever, two Odyssey, the mine teams for our students. Uh, one of our volunteers is right here, Mrs. Espinoza. Thank you. Um. We had two, two full teams, uh, compete, I believe it was in Chatham this, this past weekend, right? Um, and one of the Janay teams actually won the section title and is actually going to the state competition on April sixteenth. Um, actually, it's the sixteenth, right? I believe, uh, in, in Syracuse, New York. Uh, where I'll be attending to wish them luck and hopefully they, they will win a state championship to bring back to Janay. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregnon. Anyone else? Yeah, between the science, Olympia, Odyssey and all the wonderful academic achievements. Our students, always great to recognize them and I'm glad we're able to support those trips and activities. Board forum? Thank you, Joanne.
I actually just wanted to take a quick minute to thank, um, Mr. Simons and the Committee on Global Education. On our recent completion of the One Community, One Book Initiative. I have to say that this has been a work conversation because I have a grandmother who, of a child here in the district. Who's been telling me how great the book is and. Then I vowed to be peer pressure and I'm only about halfway through. Don't tell me the ending. So it, it's been, it's, I've, I've heard a lot of talk about it within the community, um, from the high school right down to a first grader. And so I just wanted to say it was a great initiative and I can't wait to watch the video with, uh, the author. Thank you.
Um, I was gonna say that Kathleen as well, but I, I'm glad to see that it was such a successful program across not only the district, but the community. Um, I had the opportunity to go to Janay and I read to a class of second graders and they, um. All wrote me individual thank you notes. How cute is that? It was really nice because my youngest is now in high school and does not usually want to be seen with me. So being able to read to second graders again was fantastic. They were very engaged, had lots of questions. So I'd love to continue this each year.
Thank you. Mr. Mann, anything? Very studious over there, so I was wondering. All right. I don't have anything. Um, I would appreciate the community's involvement this evening and the amount of. Parent input we had and seeing the kids to start off the meeting was great. As it always is when we come to elementary schools and other schools to, to see, uh, the wonderful, uh, progress they've made and the things that they're doing. And they got a history lesson too on Belltop, which I didn't know. So eighteen eighty-six, long time. So, all right. With that, we do have need for an executive session regarding, uh, student issues, replacement displayer action, things like that. We don't want to dispay a return to record business after the meeting. So with that, I need a motion to move into executive session. John, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you for, uh, being here this evening.